Rest.
Call with Springfield City Council work session. The local.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Yeah.
Counselor Weber here, Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley here, Counselor Blackwell here, Counselor Doyle here, and Counselor Stout.
Here, thank you.
Yeah.
Session, which is the housing related code and update. With Haley.
Good evening, councilors and mayor.
Working.
There I am. Tonight, we're going to be discussing the housing related code and plan update. I've come to you a few times with code and plan updates, so this is just going to be an introduction to the project. And we'll be getting some feedback on strategies. So this work is to continue the ongoing work of Springfield's housing strategy. And that's to help the city come into compliance with all state housing related statutes and rules. As well as alignment with the city's goals for facilitating housing production affordability and choice by reducing regulatory barriers. Particular attention will be focused on amending the development code to include clear and objective standards for mixed use districts. As expressed in Springfield City Council Resolution number 2023 dash 28. Regarding the major tasks for this project, they are summarized here on the screen. For project management, biweekly meetings are scheduled between the city and Cascadia Partners, our consultants, who will review the progress made or address questions uncovered during different phases of the project. For community engagement, the city will establish the community engagement plan, which will be reviewed and approved by the Springfield Planning Commission, acting in its capacity as the Committee for Citizen Involvement. Staff would like to know if council would like to create a governance committee and if there is any input on advisory committee. I'll get into that in a slide or two. For the code and plan changes, there will be three phases. This will look like the code and plan audit, the code and plan concepts, and the third, the final code and plan amendments. The audit will identify the portions of the development code, comprehensive plans and neighborhood refinement plans that need to be amended to comply with state law, as well as code sections that could be amended to advance local housing goals. Based on feedback from staff, council and the planning commission, Cascadia Partners will revise the audit to ensure the document is accurate and most useful for future amendments. In order to facilitate discussion and feedback, prior to writing detailed code and plan amendments, Cascadia Partners will create high level summaries of the potential code and plan amendments. This is also called the code and plan concepts, as you're seeing on the screen. The code and com, the code concepts will represent potential code or plan amendments, including alternative approaches to amendments as needed. Based on findings and feedback of the code concepts, Cascadia will prepare the draft amendments to the city's development code, the comprehensive plan, and any relevant neighborhood refinement plans. The drafts of the code and plan amendments will be reviewed by staff, the planning commission and city council. For a timeline, Cascadia Partners is currently in the code and plan, code and plan audit phase and are expected to wrap up the draft audit by early April, as you're seeing on the screen. In March, staff will take the community engagement plan to the Committee for Citizen Involvement for discussion and to determine if a governance committee and/or advisory committee is warranted. Staff and Cascadia Partners will participate in two rounds of community engagement, shown as the stars and orange on the screen. The activities will be outlined in the community engagement plan and will take place from May to June and from September to October of this year. Cascadia will provide the materials for the activities and the coding concepts work will be completed over the summer with finalization by December of this year. A major topic for discussion tonight is if the council would like to form a governance committee. This project is a continuation of work related to a larger code update project that has been ongoing since 2018, involving a phase plan to update the entire Springfield development code. It is separate but related to Phase Three of the Development Code Update and would amend housing related code sections that were not updated in Phase One for housing or Phase Two for employment lands. For Phases One and Two, that included a technical advisory committee and governance committee. The technical advisory committee included members of various interests and expertise from within the community. Parts of the technical advisory committee included staff, other government agencies, and utility provider participants on a topic specific basis. The meetings were open to the public for observation. They performed an analysis of the existing code and new code concepts and provided technical information and advice on how to, how changes could be made and why the changes were proposed based on the project objective. The role of the governance committee was to identify key issues and provide directions on areas of focus to the project team. The governance committee for Phases One and Two was comprised of two city councilors and two planning commissioners. The governance committee provided an additional opportunity to the community to provide input. The governance committee members were tasked to provide updates to their respective bodies, including the planning commission and city council. Given a, given the limited scope of the ongoing code amendments, the city has not formed a technical advisory committee or reconvened the governance committee for Phase Three updates. With the housing related code and plan update, staff will seek council's direction on whether or not to reestablish the governance committee. Or will the scheduled update meetings, which I'll show in a few slides, be sufficient? Each work session, staff and our Cascadia partners will solicit and share feedback on the findings of the code audit, code and plan concepts and code and plan amendments. Staff does recommend forming an advisory committee. So as we discussed earlier, there are two parts to the code and plan audit. The compliance with state statutes and administrative rules and the policy driven changes. For the state statute compliance portion of the audit, Cascadia Partners will review the development code, the comprehensive plan and refinement plans for compliance with DLCD's key housing statutes and rules. They will then redline the code and plan sections that are noncompliant or needing change for the code and plan concepts work to come. For the policy driven changes, Cascadia Partners will review the comprehensive plan goals, housing plans and policy audits to identify existing or past Springfield pro housing strategies. They will then take inventory of potential code barriers and select housing types from the CFAC walkable standards to test development feasibility against these code barriers. Again, any code sections or housing strategies from comprehensive plans or refinement plans that trigger specific development barriers or issues will be flagged for change. What does this look like? Some of the state statutes that will be reviewed as part of the code and plan audit include ORS 197 and 197A for comprehensive land use planning, which will look at allowed housing types, procedural requirements and clear and objective standards. For ORS 222, for city planning and zoning, which will look at permitting and review of requirements. For ORS 92, subdivisions and partitions. And for OAR 660, for DLCD's administrative rules with emphasis on land use requirements in climate friendly areas. We expect that these findings to be reviewed internally with staff by mid-March. So some findings from the audit. For clear and objective standards, ORS 197A point 400, state law requires cities to adopt clear and objective standards, conditions and procedures when regulating the development of housing. This applies to all standards that apply to housing and residential uses, such as design criteria, setbacks, height and land use application criteria. Two examples are shown on the screen in blue. For SDC 3.311025 for the nodal development area, there are specific design standards and it has a standard for compatibility for massing and scale that require development to break up uninteresting box like forms into smaller varied masses and avoid single monolithic forms that are not relieved by variations in massing. Cascadia found that this is not a clear and objective standard. New clear and objective code language could say, buildings shall incorporate at least two of the following massing techniques for any facade longer than 50 feet. The next example is in Springfield Development Code 3.4.275 for Glenwood Riverfront Mixed Use Plan District. The building design requirements includes ground floor building facades where development must utilize ground floor windows and entrances that provide a high level of transparency by allowing views both inward and outward. Cascadia also found that this was not clear and objective. New code language could say, the ground floor must include transparency or glazing, which would look like glass windows or glass doors totaling a minimum of 40% of the ground level wall area, including the ground level wall area up to 10 feet above the finished grade. Next, we're going to look at the policy driven changes. This is separate from the code compliance audit and you can think of it as our way of ensuring that citywide we are promoting policies through code that are supportive of housing development. This will feed into the code concepts works later to come. Many cities have taken or are in the midst of the first steps required by the CFAC program to designate climate friendly areas. The requirement in OAR 660 dash 12 dash 330 or Rule 330 are intended to strengthen walkability for the rest of the city. Specifically, the main streets and neighborhoods surrounding the CFAs that will support these growing centers of activity. Land use regulations required by 330 apply to the entire urban growth boundary. This includes all commercial and residential zone districts. Cities are not required to update site design regulations in zones with a predominantly industrial or rural character. Walkable design standards apply both within and outside of climate friendly areas. There will be some overlap between land use regulation changes related to OAR 660 dash 12 or 330 and those related to land use requirements and CFAs as required by 660 12 320. The intent is that the CFAC standards cover additional areas that are not designated as CFAs. For example, a highway commercial zone or small area of neighborhood commercial and or downtown or corridors. Again, this will feed into the code concepts works later on in the project. Related questions, as you can see on the screen, might include, are there certain building types that should be allowed in certain land use districts? Which ones? What standards would have to change to allow that to happen? Are the proposed changes, i.e. the code concepts, palatable to the city, et cetera? Now on to the nitty gritty of the timeline. For tonight, we introduce the project to you. On March 18th, we will introduce the purpose and timeline of the project to the Committee for Citizen Involvement, acting as the planning commission. Part of the engagement plan will include strategies discussed tonight with you. We will also solicit input from the Committee for Citizen Involvement on the formation of an advisory committee. On April 28th, we will come back to you to summarize the findings of the code and plan audit and solicit any necessary feedback. On May 20th, we will share those findings with the planning commission and appoint an advisory committee members if applicable. On August 19th and September 8th, we'll share the draft code and plan concepts with you and the planning commission. And by December 2nd, we should have a public review draft of the code and plan amendments to share with the planning commission. So I'd now like to go back to the slide about the formation of a governance committee and open the floor up to the council.
Go ahead, Cori.
I have so many questions, but I'm gonna try not to. Like I'm gonna try not to take up more than my fair share because I'm sure other people have questions too. So I'll start with the advisory committee because that's where you stopped and then I'm going to go back into some other little nitty gritty stuff. So this advisory, is this an advisory committee to the council or to the planning commission?
Um, both.
Yeah, so it would be formed of, like I said, interested parties, people with development experience, members of the public, I guess you could say, who will be reviewing draft materials and then giving us feedback. At the same time, we're scheduling these meetings with you, the council and with the planning commission. So we can take any of that feedback from that advisory committee and bring it to you for discussion.
So then would this advisory committee be subject to public meeting laws? Would it be a public meeting?
Yes.
So my thoughts about this and I'm, it's probably, I'm gonna go where we go. But that takes, I'm curious about capacity because to staff an advisory committee in addition to the parallel sort of projects that you're talking about doing, that takes some staff capacity, especially if these are public meetings that have to be noticed and there have to be minutes and there have to be all the things. So I just would, that's going to be a concern for me is like, do we have capacity to do this in the amount of time there? And then my other question is, I just got to go back and if this is getting too in the weeds, you said something about the, the walkability and some of these other things that needed to be both within the CF areas and without. So, and I saw your face when you said that, you were probably like, please don't ask me questions about that. Because I'm thinking, okay, so we have to have the CFAs because we're talking about both housing density and sort of the livability and the walkability. But then the idea of how, how we scale that out citywide, especially in a city like Springfield with the other piece that you said about the, sort of the, the manufacturing areas and things like that, because we got, we got manufacturing right in downtown Springfield. So I can see why we need to spend some time on it. But also was like, wait, what, why did we do this if we're going to have to do it citywide and all of that? So it's probably an unanswerable question, but I just want to make sure I understood you correctly when you said yes.
Yes. Yeah. And I just point out that the OARs are usually the, the rules, the standards that we have to abide by. So that was, I kind of went into a little bit of their OAR standards, not just for the CFA areas, but also those other areas.
Okay. Victoria, I see you reaching.
Thanks for the presentation. So the consultant, I, I have a few concerns about a consultant that was provided by DLCD because I do think that they tend to have their own agenda that may not align with some of Springfield's. Are, are the things that we might want for our city? So Cascadia, is that the only option that we had to be able to get the grant funding? Or is there a reason that we chose them? And if so, what is their, what was their sort of their expertise to be able to guide us?
Yeah, so Cascadia Partners is actually working with Chelsea Hartman. She's another senior planner on the CFA areas. So they were actually chosen by DLCD for us, probably because they're working with us on the CFA areas. And so what I tried to get into in the presentation is it's sort of related. Like it's related, but not in that we have to address those areas outside of the CFA work. So while Chelsea is handling her side of just the CFAs, I'm handling the everything else sort of related.
Okay. Okay, and then, and I may be completely off and let me know, but is the clear and objective is, once we, we create these clear and objective guidelines, are people going to have the option between general and clear and objective? Like, are they going to have, have like two tracks that they'll be able to choose when they're doing land divisions? Because even though clear and objective is nice, because it's clear and objective, it's also pretty rigid. And so people are pretty much locked into where there's a lot more flexibility with general. And so I'm hoping, in fact, what I've seen in across the pond where I work, we see a lot more people go to general than the clear and objective, simply because it is so rigid and very set in what people can choose.
Yeah. Yeah, I think with this project, we're just focusing on the sections that are not in compliance right now with the clear and objective. So that doesn't mean that we're doing away with the discretionary, it just means we're meeting the, the minimum by state law to comply with those clear and objective standards.
Okay, so you have two paths currently?
Yes.
And you're just, okay, you're updating them. So they're not like trying to rewrite like a middle housing code or some type of code like they, like they have in different municipalities where they have their own, they didn't go by what the state ORS was, right? Like they sort of created their own, which we've seen, especially with Eugene, where it's been appealed and it's been remanded twice and it's been a real problem. And so I'm wondering if we're just trying to kind of shore up our stuff or if we're actually creating our own sort of set of guidelines that could be open to potential appeals and.
Yeah. I'd say for right now, the, the emphasis is not on the middle housing section.
Okay.
It's just to comply with the minimum standards.
Cool. And then when I'm looking at the list that you have here on your, the main sheet, the consultant team was identifying opportunities and one of them says improved design outcomes and resident, of residential development. What does design outcomes mean?
So I think that was highlighted in the walkable design standards that Cascadia Partners has worked with to generate. And so I think that will be something that they'll be looking to us to see if those standards we want to incorporate into our code at the same time.
Okay. And then on the TAC, do you, do you know who, are you familiar with any of the people that were involved in the TAC previously? That we would, I want to make sure that, that our development folks are being represented and that they're involved in that conversation if we do decide to go back to doing, including this in what we're doing.
Yeah, our comprehensive planning team, me and others will be reaching out to those interested parties, developers who participated previously to see if they want to join this process again. As well as others will, will be providing notice and asking for the public to be involved if they want to.
Okay, and so it's developers from all, not just like nonprofits. You're talking about like a, a nice scope of folks that are actually the ones that'll be affected by these changes that we're making?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. And then, um, do you know who the, who the councillors were before? Was it, are you talking like 2018 is when we had a, the governance committee before?
Yeah, the Development Code Update Project for 2022, Mark Rust is here. He could probably answer who was on that group if need be. I'm, I'm not familiar.
Trying to let Mark Rust hide in the back.
Out back there, it's not a big deal. I was just curious if, who we had on there and kind of how that worked out. Or what it involved, because some of the similar concerns that Counselor Rodley had with timing and all of that.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Now that I'm done coughing for hopefully a few minutes, I think is the question, who was on the previous?
Yeah, what kind of time? Yeah, and what kind of timeframe that maybe might answer some of what Counselor Rodley was, has some concerns about?
Honestly, I don't remember exactly who was on it. I'd have to refresh my memory.
I believe it was Counselor Mo, myself, Greg James, and I do not remember the other planning commissioner at the time.
Honestly, I, it didn't meet that often, maybe once or twice. I think at the most, we really utilized that group. I think as the project evolved, it didn't coincide really with a lot of input points that made sense to convene that group. There were so many check ins with either the planning commission or the city council as a whole bodies in many work sessions. I think similar to what Haley's planning for this, that it didn't really make sense. What we did have as an internal group, the director at the time was Tom Boyott. Sandy Belson and myself would meet fairly regularly and talk through some of the direction points. And then Tom, at the time, could take that to council leadership and agenda setting and those types of things. So anyway, that's my recollection.
Thank you.
And, and I guess while we're getting into the, into this topic, when I look at the timeframe, it, it may make sense to go ahead and, and appoint a governance committee, not to meet a whole lot, but just to allow us to have a natural sort of check in. Some of this is fairly technical that if, if we got kind of not aligned through it, we could get to the end and find out, hey, we don't like the output, right? So in my mind, I saw that and I was like, okay, maybe it's just one time, just to get them to balance, you know, sort of logic check some of the, some of the result, some of the work that they're doing. Okay, anybody else? Counselor Weber.
Yeah, so I had kind of the same questions along staff capacity. But at the same time, if it's, if it's really helpful to the process and it helps make things more efficient in the long run, then I think it makes sense to form both committees.
All right. I, Stephen.
These previous, previous meetings that we had, really it was unclear what we were trying to achieve. So it was difficult in those meetings, but I'm willing to go on if the mayor would appoint me, so.
Yeah, and I think, and Mark, I think my feedback would be was just meeting one time kind of over the summer in the middle of it, just to take our pulse. Is that kind of, would that be enough to get Haley to get you, you know, some sort of reasonable feedback? I don't think we have to make it into a, a sort of science project.
Allison, would you mind pulling up the slides again? I just want to show the schedule.
Perfectly fine. We do not have to solve this tonight.
One more, okay. I just wanted to point out the timeline. So there was kind of an overall, sorry, an overall timeline which showed the dates where council was on break. These dates really do take that into account, the, the dates where you're not here to convene. And so that's why we have more planning commission work sessions with them to check in. I think, you know, if, if a governance committee isn't created, we could absolutely count these work sessions that we have scheduled with you as part of that governance committee check in. It's just if, if you think there would be additional time needed to check in. I think also, you know, I may not have results from the audit, from the code and plan concepts, from the final draft, ready to share with you. And I think those are the times where we're going to want to check in and receive feedback.
Well, and I think that's the, I think that's the bigger question. So let me back up to a different point. I think a TAC would be very useful here, right? Because that is like, we need, whatever we design, it needs to be economically competitive, right? And, you know, having the developers at the table would make a whole lot of sense. I'm in favor for a fairly limited version of a governance committee. And then we can sort out the, the kind of details as we go forward. The other question that I had was, is the state still, are all administrative rules set? Or is the state still adopting rules?
The state is always adopting rules.
That, thank you for hitting that one out of the park. Because hopefully they will catch this when I'm sure the, the state will watch this on the replay on, on YouTube. I think that's one of the big challenges of what, what we've got going on is it is always a moving target. The other piece that I think is really critical, and I think Counselor Doyle did a nice job of bringing up, is just how rigid clear and objective standards can be. And then, and then could you talk a little bit more about the consultant? And I don't know that the consultants here, when they start writing the concepts, right? Like I, you know, and we're relying on them to do a lot. And I thought they've done fairly good work with the market analysis around CFAC and the other documents we've seen about CFAC. Are, are the consultants starting this with like, we need to achieve what the, you know, meet the, what the, the state rules are? Are they taught, are they starting this with a, hey, we need to by far exceed what the state rules have to say? Because those could be two different outcomes.
Yeah, the emphasis is on just meeting the standards. That's number one. And then the second part of the project is that policy driven section. And that could be, you know, everything else, any, anything that we want to be pro housing about. That's where we have more flexibility to make these policy decisions to decide, hey, we want to go above and beyond or we don't.
I don't know that going above and beyond or some of the state rules is necessarily pro housing, right? Like, so that's the thing I'm kind of thinking about. And I think I'm still curious in that question, right? Because at the end, we need a code that works for this community. And I know everybody, I see all the head nods going, yeah. So, but this is a good start. Going to look around to see if anybody has anything else then. Go ahead, Counselor Stout.
So just clarify with me, it's a, it's a code audit to update things. But at what points are you interested in either the planning commission's input on? code audit to update things, but at what points are you interested in either the planning commission's input on policy changes or the council's input on policy changes? And I, I know it's, it's easy to be like, hey, while we're changing this, we might as well add this and this and this. And that's a very slippery slope. I just kind of want clarity from you. Hey, where do you want to see that? Is, that seems like a little bit outside the scope of the project, but you know, like, like one example be, hey, as we're doing these CFAC type building types, I just really want to make sure we avoid a monoculture of development so that we're building things at different times within our city for, as an example of that. Can you just clarify with me what, where you want feedback where?
Yeah, I will definitely be looking for feedback during these scheduled work sessions. For the governance committee, if it's outside of those work sessions during those times, um, any of the TAC, you know, uh, input from those meetings. So I, I think it'll really be an ongoing process with this project, but we're really going to be looking for it and we'll have responses, documentation, evidence, questions at those work sessions. Those will be the dates when Cascadia Partners has usually finalized the audit, the concepts and the plan amendments.
Anybody else? And I will, I'll just make one last comment, like the, the work we've done around development code, the last probably, I don't know. I feel like it's been two years, but it's, it's probably been more like seven. Um, I think has been really important for this community. And I, I'm looking at the date and I think I'm feeling what everybody else is feeling going, oh, December 2nd is awful quick, right? And so I'm just hyper aware of the amount of work you guys have a, a, ahead of you. And I'm, I think it's just valuable to point, you know, point that out.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That is the only item we have. We are adjourned till seven o'clock and then we are meeting on this link. I'm gonna call the city council regular session to order with your call. Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Weber.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Blackwell.
Here.
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
Counselor Stout.
Here, thank you.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. There are two designated times for a public testimony this evening under public hearings and business from the audience. If you are attending in person, please complete the request to, to speak card located at the front of the council chambers and turn them into the city recorder. If you're joining us online with a tablet, smartphone or computer and wish to speak to either of those times, please use your raised hand feature in Zoom. The order of public testimony is as follows. Anyone in person in the council chambers and then anyone who has raised their virtual hands. First item, please. Mayor, the first item is Springfield upbeat. Item number one is Women in Construction Week Proclamation 2025. And this is your item. Also, Rodney, you didn't pack your hard hat.
Especially for public work.
All right. I'm going to read the proclamation and we'll have a couple of folks up for a picture. Whereas the National Association of Women in Construction Week was founded by sixteen, was founded by sixteen women working in the construction industry in 1933. It was established in 1955 in Fort Worth, Texas. Whereas the work done by NAWIC Chapter 77 has benefited the state through community development and education programs. And whereas the Eugene and Springfield chapter has promoted that employment and advancement of women in the construction industry. And whereas the construction community represented, represented by the NAWIC Chapter 77 has been a driving force in fostering community development, renovation and beautification programs, the promotion of skilled trade careers and a positive vision of the future. I, Sean Van Gordon, the mayor of Springfield hereby proclaim and recognize NAWIC Chapter 77 and as many dedicated volunteers who work on behalf and support women in construction and proclaim March 2nd through 7th, 2025 is Women in Construction Week. And I believe we have Destiny Dawson here. We're, we're gonna have you up. I'll be down and take it. And Ursula Lund, who's from, from the association. And then Jocelyn, who's the engineering, engineer. Oh, there you are, Jocelyn. I didn't see you come in. We're, we're gonna take a picture. Come on up. Next item is the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar. Second.
Well, could you call the vote, please? Yes, Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Blackwell.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Aye.
And Counselor Stout.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero noes. Next item, please. Next item is public hearings. You have one public hearing this evening. It's the Glenwood Riverfront Annexations. This is an ordinance annexing certain territories, map 17 dash zero three dash three four dash four one. Tax lots 400, 500, 700, 800, 900, 1,000, 1,300 and 1,500. Map 17 dash zero three dash three four dash four two, tax lots 100, 200, 300, 400, 500, five zero one, five zero two, five zero three, five zero four, 600, 700, 800, 900, 1,000, 1,200, 1,300, 1,400, 1,500, 1,600, 1,700, 1,800, 1,900, 2,000 and 2,100 to the city of Springfield withdrawing the same territory from the Glenwood Water District and the Willackensie Springfield Rural Fire Protection District, adopting a separability clause and providing an effective date. Uh, this is a first reading only, so no action required. And Tom Severs is here for this item.
Tried to shorten that down, but I was overruled on that. So anyways, all right. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. I'm Tom Severs, Senior Planner with the Current Planning Section. Tonight, the council is requested to consider an ordinance to annex an approximately 21.11 acre area. That includes 32 tax lots along the Glenwood Riverfront in Western Springfield. More specifically, the proposed annexation area is highlighted in red and is currently improved with some commercial businesses, but is otherwise vacant land. The applicants are the property owners and this application was initiated by council on July 1st, 2024 via adoption of resolution 2024 dash 22. The site has zoned Glenwood residential mixed use and Glenwood commercial mixed use with the urbanizable fringe UF-10 overlay seen here by the opaque shading. As you can see by the red dashed line, it is contiguous to the city limits primarily along the southern property boundary. If annexation is approved, no other zoning changes are requested except for the removal of the UF-10 overlay. With annexation, the subject property will be removed from special, special districts such as the UF-10 overlay depicted here by the absence of the opaque shading and removal from service areas such as the Willackensie Springfield Rural Fire Protection District and the Glenwood Water District. Again, no other zoning changes will occur with this annexation. There are four approval criteria for annexations in the Springfield Development Code, which were fully analyzed in the staff report and summarized as follows. Criterion A, within the UGB and contiguous to city limits. As previously stated, the subject property is contiguous to the city limits along its southern boundary. The subject territory is within the city's urban growth boundary and is currently covered by the UF-10 overlay. Criterion B, consistent with policies of the Springfield Comprehensive Plan and Metro Plan. Policies 27, 29, 33, 34 and 35 of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan's Urbanization Element are met through this application as the annexed land will be fully within the Springfield Urban Services area. Criterion C, within boundary for the minimum level of key urban facilities to be received in a timely and efficient manner. Policies 29, 31 and 32 of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan's Urbanization Element are met through this application as well. If annexation is approved, the subject territory can easily obtain key facilities and services from the Franklin Boulevard right of way and will be further extended through future master plan development. These facilities and services will include sanitary sewer connection, sub-water and electric service, fire protection services from the Eugene Springfield Fire Department and police services from Springfield Police. The subject site is currently within the service area of the Willam Lane Park and Recreation District. Lastly, Criterion D, the annexation agreement. In some situations, an annexation agreement is the typical mechanism for mitigation of fiscal impacts to the city. The code allows for other mechanisms as approved by council. In this case, as part of a broader urban renewal project, the property owners have entered into a joint planning agreement that requires the parties to cooperate toward creation and adoption of a master plan. The joint planning agreement will ensure that fiscal impacts to the city will be mitigated through, through a future master plan and obviates the need for a separate annexation agreement in this case. Because all applicable annexation criteria have been met and the annexation will help facilitate the joint planning agreement and master plan for urban renewal of the Glenwood Riverfront. City staff recommends that this application be considered for approval by council. Thank you, and I'm here for any questions. Counselor Mo.
Do you know Glenwood is not in the Willackensie Rural Fire Protection District? It's not the Willackensie. It's the Glenwood, Glenwood Water District contracts for Springfield, Springfield Fire Protection directly.
Okay, understood. Yeah, yeah. I was looking at one of our other maps that we have.
Counselor Rodney.
I have no questions. I'm just very excited at every step that we take. And this is a big one that has taken us a while to get to. And I know we're not making a decision today, but just keep taking those steps. We're doing it. Thank you.
All right. So before I open the public.
One thing, it's about time.
All right. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. I have no cards for this item. Neil, do we have anybody online that wants to speak?
No hands for this item.
I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and see if there's any other conversation or discussion before we move. This is a first reading only, no action tonight. So next item, please. Mayor, the next item is business from the audience. I have two cards tonight. The first one is Charlotte Helmer. And come on up, please state your name and location, your name and address for the record. Hit it again. It's gonna be green. There you go.
Thank you. Um, good evening. I'm Charlotte Helmer. I live in Ward Two. I'm here today to share a brief update about the Egan Warming Centers. Um, and especially to express my, like my gratitude and say thank you to the city of Springfield for all the contributions that the city has made to Egan Warming Centers during this season. I do not formally represent the Egan Warming Centers or St. Vincent de Paul, so please be aware of that. These are just my comments as a volunteer and a community member here in Springfield. Egan has done very well this year. I'm partly here to share some failures and concerns just for your awareness and for transparency. But ultimately, the most important thing is that the Egan Warming Centers has successfully sheltered many, many lives this season already. Across the combined Springfield and Eugene sites, we shelter hundreds of people every night on 23 cold nights so far. That's a pretty big year for us. Um, at the Memorial Building here in Springfield, we have typically sheltered 60 to 80 people on any given night. But during a long cold spell in January, our numbers actually rose to 100 people a night and then 120, which is pretty much our capacity. So we definitely feel like we are successfully serving a really important need in the community. This year, Lane County contributed additional funding to support the Egan Warming Centers. And I think we've seen that have an impact. We've seen that in action. They have provided more paid staff this year to support us, um, which has really made a big difference here at the Springfield site and, um, at other sites. Most importantly, I think, Lane County and the city of Springfield contributed two of the most important shelter sites that Egan operated this year. The Lane Event Center, of course, and then the wonderful Springfield Memorial Building. These are so essential, um, to our success as a program. It's honestly hard for me to speak about the Memorial Building without getting emotional. Because she is an old leaky boat, but she has, uh, sheltered and kept safe many lives year after year. And I think for a lot of us volunteers, at the start of a season, when we put out the mats and we unpack the crates and we put food in the cabinets, um, we really do feel, um, just emotional about, um, what an important role that, that building has served. So thank you very much, um, for the use of that building. Other Springfield partners, um, have included those who helped maintain and manage the building. Also EMS, police and cahoots have been very important partners. And city hall staff have gone above and beyond to coordinate open hours so that guests have a safe place to go during the day. When we at Egan are closed. As a volunteer, I also know I've served alongside several city staff and elected officials who I won't call out by name in case they're not comfortable with that, but you know who you are. And it has really been a joy to work alongside you. Uh, they have personally given their time and talents to Egan, and that is wonderful. Um, we have struggled in some important ways that I'll just share briefly. The marathon activation in January, we were open for 12 nights almost continuously. And that's the kind of scale that we're just not built for. So it, it's comparable to last year's ice storm. To be honest, it just hammered at every weakness in our system and really challenged us. Shortages of blankets and volunteers and staff, but we did get it done. This one was not a community-wide emergency, so I don't know if it sort of was on everyone's radar the way the ice storm was last year. But for us at Egan, it was actually a comparable emergency and my time is up, so I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you. Elliot Harwell.
Hello. Good. All right. Hello. My name is Elliot Harwell. I'm a resident of Ward Three. I'd like to begin my comment by thanking my councilwoman and the assistant city manager for responding to some of my questions that I had about keeping public minutes. I'm very appreciative that the city has begun to create, generate minutes and not just recordings of their meetings anymore. So as a citizen that's been paying attention, I really appreciate it. Thank you. Additionally, um, I come to you as a resident of Springfield that also happens to be a trans woman. Uh, and I'm a spokeswoman for the Trans Alliance of Lane County. We're, I'm here tonight to ask the city council to support our organization's efforts to protect the rights of trans people and immigrants, uh, in Lane County. Over the past several weeks, uh, the federal government has taken aggressive stances towards, uh, stripping trans people, queer people and immigrants of their rights. And concerned citizens of Lane County have been working together to try to affect change at the local level. On Tuesday, February 25th, the, uh, Lane County Commissioners met and have agreed to start the process of, um, uh, having a commitment to Oregon's pre-existing sanctuary laws. And so I'm coming now to the city to ask for something similar at the city level. For those of you that, uh, might not be aware, uh, Oregon was the first state in the country to pass, uh, sanctuary laws in eight, in 1987. These limit the ability of, uh, state and local law enforcement to work with federal authorities. in terms of immigration arrests, no immigration status questions and no ICE access to people. And so as a member of the Trans Alliance of Lane County, my, what we were hoping from both the county, but also from Eugene and from Springfield was a commitment by local government to adhere to state laws and to also work to expand existing sanctuary laws for immigrants to also cover trans people. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. Neil, do we have anybody online that wants to speak?
No hands for this item.
Okay. Do we have any counsel response? All right, next item, please.
So nice. Thank you.
Counsel Rodney.
Thank you. Thank you to both of you for coming and sharing. I think we've mentioned a few times over the course of the winter how much we appreciate the Egan volunteers. So thank you for coming and representing the volunteers who go out on the coldest nights to help us take care of our neighbors. And thank you, Elliot, for coming and sharing both about the minutes, which I shared at a meeting too, because I wanted our minute taker to know how much she was appreciated for helping us get compliant with that and to bringing the conversation about, you know, safety and welcomeness here in Springfield for folks who are feeling particularly targeted. So thank you both for coming and sharing.
Next item, please.
Next item is resolutions. Resolution number one is a resolution of necessity, filling in the gaps, safe routes to school, capital improvement projects, P21147. Again, this is resolution number one, resolution exercising the power of eminent domain pursuant to ORS 35.600 through 35.625 concerning acquisition of permanent rights of way and temporary construction easements necessary for filling the gaps, safe routes to school, capital improvement project, project number P21147. And Jeremy Shear is here for this item.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm not going to go through everything. It's pretty self-evident that this is a capital improvement project that was adopted and funded a year ago. This is the right of way process is a critical path to having the, this project be successful. So if we want, if, the right of, excuse me, the resolution of necessity allows staff to use that authority, but I wanted to talk about that just really briefly. The right of way staff will negotiate in good faith with, with the landowners to reach a, an agreement on just compensation. But if they should fail, it doesn't automatically go right to condemnation. It go, there are alternative dispute resolutions that we can, we have at our access. And we can discuss more of that if you have questions, but it doesn't necessarily mean we just go right into condemnation. So we, we make a good faith effort and then we, then we attempt, attempt to close the deal. And if we can't, there's other things that we can do. So I wanted to make that clear. The project is designed in a matter that is most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. The improvements will be a general benefit in helping improve conditions for students walking to and from school across Springfield and other people who wish to use the sidewalks. And so how's this going to affect people? I wanted to show you or talk a little bit about Exhibit B in your AIS there. So Exhibit B, page one of two, I'll just use that as my first example here. This is E Street. So if you notice on there, I have a schedule of property acquisitions up in the upper rank quarter. That tells you exactly what, what is needed for this project to be successful. So we have three landowners. Two of them are going to be permanent acquisitions and three will be temporary. Now, we need those temporary acquisitions sometimes in order to match grade like to a driveway or so forth or other, a grade just onto their lawn. So in this case, you can, you can see in the screened hatched, there are one, two, three, three temporary construction easements. And then just the hatched, there's only two. So page two, we've got the same situation. On this one, there's no temporary easements. It's just all acquisition, but the schedule you'll see down below middle bottom. And there's, I think there's, yeah, there's 11, one, two, three, no, there's four, one, two, three, four, about eight acquisitions there. So I wanted to bring that to your attention so that you can see exactly what is being acquired on this project. That's all I have. Got off to a rough start, but hopefully I finished all right.
Are there any questions? Also.
I just want to make one quick note to say that my vote tonight doesn't reflect my support or lack thereof of the safer school routes program. I just have an aversion to eminent domain and I just can't ever vote for it. Sorry.
I move to adopt resolution number one. Second.
Sir, any other discussion? All right, Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Mo.
Yes.
Counsel Rodley.
Yes.
Counsel Blackwell.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle.
Nay.
And Counsel Stout.
Yes, thank you.
Our motion passes, five yeses, one no. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Next item is business from the city council. Item number one is Planning Commission Appointment and Sandy Belson is here for this item.
Evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sandy Belson. I'm the Comprehensive Planning Manager and I help staff the Planning Commission. At your previous work session, you interviewed three applicants for one position on the Planning Commission. That position is being made available due to Commissioner Rhodes resignation. One person actually withdrew his application after your interviews. And so I'm looking for your direction as to who to appoint to serve on the Planning Commission.
Counsel Stout.
Sandy, you know that I'm a huge fan of you and all the amazing work you do at the Planning Commission. So thank you for leading a very complicated group and really keeping all the planning commissioners, what I'm saying with myself, in line with that. So you have my respect and admiration always. It was a tough choice. And that said, I actually would like to move to, to send back the candidates. I would actually ask you to open up a new round of candidates for the planning commissioners. I think that some of us as counselors, I don't want to speak for anybody else, may have had some concerns just about who we had on the team. And so I think we would like to, I would like to move that we do another round of selections that I know that does slow things down on the planning commission side. I want you to have a full pack as soon as possible, but I think we'd like to look at a few new candidates.
Intending to put that in the form of a motion.
I'm struggling with that. Mary Bridget, can you help me with the language on that?
Sure, Counsel Stout. The motion would be that you move to reopen the recruitment for the open planning commission spot.
Perfect. Then I move to reopen the application for the open planning commission spot.
Second.
All right, is there any other discussion about that? Neil.
Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Mo.
No.
Counsel Rodley.
No.
Counsel Blackwell.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle.
Can I abstain? Yes.
And Counsel Stout.
Yes.
Motion passes, four yeses, two noes. Next item, please.
Any other business from the council?
Excuse me, Mayor, there's one item on, for the CDAC while Sandy's at the table. Oh, there you go. Okay, thank you.
Everybody seems sure that I was going to miss this. Sandy, could you give us an update about the status of CDAC recruiting? The committee.
Yeah, we don't have any current recruitments in process, but we do have one committee member who has not been coming to meetings for the past year. So we are looking to counsel to vacate that position. That will make it easier for the CDAC to meet their quorum requirements if there are fewer members on the committee. They did have a meeting in December without a quorum, which delayed some of the progress that they were trying to make.
And could you give us an update on the other person, too?
Sure. So the Chair of the Community Development Advisory Committee passed away unexpectedly a couple of weeks ago, Sammy Allen. And so we will be starting a recruitment for both those positions, but not immediately. We'll just do that as part of the regular recruitment process. There is a meeting coming up that we need to make sure we have a quorum to conduct our business.
Yeah, everybody's signed. Family. And Mary Bridget, I don't think we need a motion. We just have to sort of by consensus say that it's agreed that that other position's vacant.
That's correct, unless you think there'll be discussion, then you can do a motion. But if by consensus, the council wants to declare the position vacant of the person who hasn't been attending, then they can move forward with their recruitment.
So I think you're getting a head nod here. You come forward to recruitments.
Thank you. And I do want to also just say, in terms of Sammy's passing, she had been on the Community Development Advisory Committee for five years and was the Chair for the past several years. And really, you know, I attended some of the meetings and I think really started off each meeting with a very positive note. So it's, we're going to really miss her.
Thanks for sharing a little bit about Sammy. Is there any other council business? Counsel Doyle.
I just want to say that I've been attending the Springfield Utility Board meetings and finding it to be incredibly helpful and, and really enlightening. I'm enjoying it a lot and plus they feed us really good. So, but I want to, I'm really appreciative that we, that we started that connection with Springfield Utility Board. And I, I think that it's really going to help moving forward with our relationship. So anyway, just want to mention that.
Thank you. Anybody else? And Allison, could you clarify for us? We are not meeting the 17th, right? March. Hello. Hey.
The last meeting before spring recess is next week, the 10th.
Thank you. There was some confusion and I was the cause of that. And so let's just, all right, next item, please.
No business from the city manager. Any business from the city attorney?
No business, thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody. We are adjourned.